Devin Jarvis.
Here.
Jason Nixon.
Here.
Amanda Huge, here.
Matthew Young.
Here.
David Benedetto.
Ron Crichton.
Here.
Tiffy.
Here.
Start with the pledge of allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Are there additions or fractions to the agenda?
No.
Motion for his hand approved.
Amanda Huge, please, Matthew Young, second, for accepting the agenda as presented.
On favor, flip it right here. Close. Start with presentation.
Guys, thanks for having us tonight. We're really excited. We've got a couple of our groups in here tonight. Our baseball team and our theater group are with us tonight. Both of them had really great years. Our baseball team finished third in the state. Maybe some questionable calls, right Scott?
I have an in there.
Question to call to, and our theater.
Old ones, old ones.
And our theater group finished first in the state, so had a really great season. So I'm gonna invite, first of all, invite Scott up and he's gonna talk a little bit about their season and the end of the year. Thank you.
Thank you guys for recognizing us. You can kind of see our team there. A year ago, we won state title. I think anytime that happens, the following year, no matter what happens, it's a bit of a letdown. You know, in the last 22 years, nobody in class five or six has ever repeated in the state champs at baseball. And so we were really hoping we could be the first one to do that. But, you know, just wasn't in the cards for us this year. But I hope as we, as we get further away from the season, we'll really appreciate what this, this group accomplished. We won 33 games, which is a school record. Our kids who just graduated, they're all going on to play college baseball. They got third in the state as freshmen. They didn't have a sophomore season due to COVID. They won state as a junior. And then they got third in the state as a senior. So it's a, it's a really special group of young men. I thought the last four to six weeks of the season, we really improved as people and players and what we just did. I thought a lot of really good things. So it's a, it's a group that I think I'm very proud of. I know our assistant coaches are very proud of. And I think our community who saw us play late in the season, we played extremely hard and did a lot of good things. So I just wanted to, to thank you guys for recognizing that. And we'll, we'll be really good again next year. But that doesn't mean we'll be back here. So we're not taking anything for granted. When you have a chance to, to celebrate and success after it's over, I think you should do that. So I want to thank you guys for recognizing us. So this is Willard Baseball.
Mr. Blair, I've got one question. Guys, do you have any special news to report?
I just commited to UCF for baseball.
Awesome.
Next, I'll have Brandon Compton come on up and let him kind of recap. And I think he might have one of his students help him recap the season.
Hi, thanks for having us tonight. It's good to be here. It's, it's great to, it's great to win. But it's really great, like while we tried to emphasize throughout the season, was it better to like work together and to make something we're really proud of? So, and then it's extra great to make something proud of. And then be very successful and win with that. So this is the cast, or part of the cast of The 146 Point Flame. And I think Jessica's gonna tell you a little bit about that show.
Yeah, so hi, I'm Jessica. So 146 Point Flame is about the triangle shirtwaist factory fire that burned down in New York City in 1911. It was the biggest factory fire disaster before 9/11. These women were so, sorry, remember things. The, so part of the script and like what happened in real life is that it's a big deal that these doors in the factory were locked. And it wasn't, when the fire started, it wasn't possible for the women to get out of the building because of, oh my gosh, the act, what was the act called?
Just the, the, this incident has just been the start of a lot of workplace safety things, particularly OSHA. And so it was the beginning of a lot of organized labor and workers' rights and just safety in the workplace.
Yeah. And so the script itself was from the perspective of four different women, two sisters from Russia, a girl from Germany, and a girl from Italy. And so it was about these foreign girls who couldn't speak English and were working in America, and how their past affected their time in the factory and the stories about how they died in the fire. Very sad.
Yeah, it was a happy story. And Jessica will be going to MSU this fall for theater as well. And Peyton's gonna tell you a little bit about our district season. Then I'll talk about us.
Hi, I'm Peyton. Back in March, we were able to host our theater districts here at Willard actually. And so we were placed in one of the most competitive groups in our state. And we were able to go up against 11 different schools and watch 11 different one-acts perform, which was really interesting. And we got to like experience a lot of different art. And we were lucky enough to place first place in that round, leading us all the way up to state. And we were.
Let's see, we went, uh, there are two different brackets at the state level with eight, I mean, did you remember, there are eight?
I think 17 total.
Yeah, okay. So I think 17 schools total at the state level. So we competed two different days. And then that second day and the final four, sorry.
So we competed, first day, we made it, they take the top two from each bracket. So we made it first day. And then second day, we went up against maybe the last like four final four. So we went up like a bunch of people first day. And then we were, we placed by one point, we won for our state. So, really awesome.
Yeah, so competing is just one thing that we do throughout the year. We also do the new school in the fall, the new school in the fall and theater camp throughout the year. And we're just grateful for y'all's support and for having us today. So thank you.
Pictures and.
We usually do that support with each group.
Baseball wars.
Baseball.
Okay, let's see all the boards. So if we can get a little bit further up, Ken, for running in. Can't see Deb. All right. One, two, three. Let's even a little bit more. Of course Colt's taller, he might be able to reach a little higher. One, two, three. Colt's trying to.
Have to just get on top of the desk.
That's it, that's it.
Or it's on Colts. Pick you back to your edge, guys.
One, two, three. One, two, three.
Okay, our next presentation is Dr. Moss with EGL and Associates. And she's gonna talk to us about strategic plans.
Thank you, right here?
Yes, right here.
And I believe I did get a chance to send the PowerPoint. So if someone doesn't just kind of click through that for me or.
I think, can you? Is that handheld?
There you go. Thank you. No, that's fine. We can start.
You may have to point it backwards. Sorry.
To that way? Okay, good work. Well, good evening. It's an honor to be able to come talk to you tonight. And I understand that you did get a copy of our proposal prior to tonight's meeting. So I had spoken with Dr. Wilkin yesterday, and I think that you got that then.
We attended to their board talks.
So I hope that this time can be interactive and that you get a chance to ask any questions that may have bubbled up as you read through that. And then I will probably be repeating some of that within these slides. But if I start running close on time, Dr. Wilkin, just kind of give me the, give me the wave.
Turn on the music.
Well, and, and I think that first of all, I want to tell you that I think the timing of looking into a new government's plan could not be better for Willard schools. Because not only are you starting the year off with a new superintendent to Willard and setting that direction and getting that vision is so important in that time period, but also with MCP6. And I'm sure you guys have been discussing M66, MCP6 prior to this. But I understand from talking to Eric yesterday, you guys are year two cohort. But that process starts this year. They're starting to evaluate the strategic plans of districts. In the past, accreditation has been based entirely on performance. So you were looking at your affirmation rates, your student achievement, and so forth. This phase is different in that 30% of your points going toward accreditation are driven by what we're gonna be talking about tonight. And that's, are you getting stakeholder input? Is the board involved not only in the development of the plan, but also the ongoing evaluation of the plan? And is that driving your budget? And is that driving the other components such as your tech plan and your facilities plan and so many other things that should be bubbling out in that governance plan? I think that's what makes the EGL process a little different from some of the other processes in that we're gonna be very intensive and very strategic about getting that stakeholder input. And the board is totally involved in that from the get-go. It's not an ad hoc committee then that kind of goes back and creates this document and then it's rubber stamped by the board. This is really about creating something that's ongoing and that you guys can monitor and adjust. And it really moves your district forward. So school board and stakeholder input is crucial in that. Okay, I'm not holding my lips right. There we go. So part of your responsibility is governance planning for late decisions, board policies, and oversight of administrative actions. Setting the priorities of the district is really part of that process for your school board. And you need to be involved in that. The governance plan is a centerpiece in which all those other things we hit on briefly in our introduction, the budget, the board staff evaluation, the superintendent evaluation. And when Dr. Wilkin and I were looking at timeline for these different phases of process, it wasn't lost on us. In January, you'll be evaluating your superintendent. And so this document, as it is developed, needs to also be an integral part of him knowing how you're going to set his priorities and where you want him to focus. And getting those updates frequently will help you with that. Your PD plan, your technology plan, your long-term facilities plan, looking at safety and security audits, that's all part of it. So you have a mission, you have a vision, beliefs. I was reading those on your bulletin board out front earlier. This does not mean we have to come in and completely change that. If that's something that you're satisfied with, you know, we can build upon that. But your governance priorities and not just goals, but also then actionable steps and measurable objectives that show what you're going to do to get to your goals is very important. So we will help with that as well. It's not something, as I said, that an ad hoc committee will do or a consulting firm goes behind the door and creates this beautiful compliance document. And then you check it off and say, well, we did that, we've got one. And then sets them together as dust. This is something that you will be tying your other actions to throughout this whole year and beyond. This is just a diagram of how traditionally all these things kind of work outside of the governing document. And this is more how we view strategic planning, is this is the governance plan. And then all those things that we talked about flow out from that. So in the dream phase, your vision, your mission, your beliefs. But we're gonna really get into the gathering of stakeholder input. We will have a meeting with your school board. And that can be either as a group setting or like a work session, or we can interview each of you individually. It's really up to you how you want that to be structured. And that is in conjunction with your superintendent. Then we will be interviewing all of your staff, all your teachers, all your classified staff. We try to do that in groups, maybe based on planning periods in the buildings. But we'll have boots on the ground, talking to each of those. And Dr. Wilkin will help us in selecting those questions and, and seeing what themes bubble up from those visits. We will also be asking each of you and Dr. Wilkin for five to six names each of community stakeholders, external stakeholders. And this may be like your booster club people and your community leaders and, and whoever you think we need to be talking to. And we'll look for different types along the way because we're not just speaking one voice. You really want to find out what your whole community thinks about that. So finding different types in that process. And then we'll do that by inviting them, then to some town hall meetings where they get their input to the process. And then in that next phase, which it was also outlined in the proposal, we will be meeting them to synthesize what we gather in that. And at the same time, we will be presenting Dr. Wilkin and his leadership team with what we call the data, data dive checklist. So there will be components of your annual secretary of the board report and your budget and looking at three years of audit information. We'll be looking at student achievement data and your curriculum alignment process. And because that quantitative piece has to be part of this. So we'll be data diving for data driven decision making, which is another component, also in MCP6, and rolling all of that into the common things where you see governance priorities. And we will be reporting back to the board throughout that process. And then once you see that draft, then hopefully by about January, you'll be ready to approve the final document. And then we stick, what sends EGL part two is we stick with you throughout that first year and help you monitor that progress and try to come back to the board after six months to a year, really at whatever you would prefer to be a part of that process. A good strategic planning process as well as the document can also be a tremendous public relations tool for your district. Because they know the heavy emphasis that you put into teacher voice, classified staff voice, your juniors and your seniors having input to that, as well as your community stakeholders. So being able to roll that out and celebrate that as well as the progress along the way will be crucial. We just included in these lines just the examples of some of the SMARTGOS with specific and measurable and time-bound actions that could result in this. So you have some pages of that for your review. I think there's one more talking about technology. You've seen that slide. So this is a synopsis. All employees in the district will be interviewed. And we will do that onsite. We'll bring a team and we'll have a lot of boots on the ground for a few days. Each board member in the team will submit names of at least five to be invited to multiple community meetings. You can help to customize those questions. And if you remember in MCP6, there are very specific questions that have to be included in our survey that anyone will be invited to take will include those. The data drive includes all documents, reports available. Like I said, we'll do that in TENS checklist. And you see some of those things listed there. And then you will have final approval after an opportunity to look at that draft and provide input. We'll report what we've heard. We'll review that and provide those recommendations to you. But local control, this has to be your plan, is crucial in that. And then as I said, we'll stay with you for the next year, available to answer questions, provide guidance, and any follow-up that you would like to see as a result of that. And I believe that's it. So questions? I know that Dr. Henson included some references with your proposal. I don't remember off the top of my head which ones you listed. As far as southwest Missouri, I know at this point, we are working currently with Purley, Monette, Crane, Golden City. We've got some other districts that have contacted us and are also requesting proposals. I would have to go back and ask you, because this is my, this is my first year with EGL. So I'm just beginning with them. But I will be happy to go back and check with Dr. Henson to see maybe other districts in our area that you would be familiar with. Fox is the district that we're currently working with.
Our size. I'd like to know if they'd have some of our size.
Yeah. Monette would be one of the.
The ones he had listed, proposal, Raynor Fulton, Jackson.
Yes, yes. But I'm not sure there are others. But I'll, I'll be happy to follow up with that for you.
Very good.
All right, well, you have reached me. And thank you again. And I look forward to working with you.
I say thank you.
What's this? Okay, thank you.
Well, good evening. Just about it. We've got a lot of great things going on at the high school. Just wanted to get a few minutes. I know at graduation, I had a chance to talk to a couple of you about some great things were happening. And probably heard it in the speech, in the speech prior to graduation. High school, I think, managed to really highlight some things that our staff and our students were doing. Our kids continually astound me with all the things they're doing. And I'd like to be able to take a look at that. First off, some of those academic numbers. The kids in the progress from 21 to 22, we've increased our number of kids who qualified to the A-plus. Our kids who scored over 30 on the ACT. As you all know, this last year, we had a kid with a purpose score. Got a couple more kind of breathing down the neck right here with a purpose score. So getting really close. Our AP enrollment has gone up. That's one of the things we're really excited about. More kids taking advantage of that. The benefits of that is kind of strength of schedule, like you were talking about in sports, right? When kids go to apply for colleges, they look at those national norm types of classes and tests that they take in. I know whenever Ashlyn, we took her to college visits, they want to know about AP classes. That was really, really important to them. So that really gives our kids a benefit. Still, by literacy jump from one kid qualified, we celebrated that young lady, I think we were at Amity South, it was a rainstorm night, we were celebrating that kid, that board meeting, to eight this year. One of those kids actually wasn't just a supply letter, she better try literacy. So it shows how our kids are really getting involved and gives them opportunities to get those certificates. Scholarships, 4.7 million, 12 years each. AP passing score, we've increased by 10%. Really super excited about that. Our kids have worked really, really hard. We were able to add AP chemistry this year, and that was just one more option for our kids. With that said, we had our very first ever in Willard High School, AP scholar. Now, that came up on a report and I, I was like, what exactly is that? And so I pulled it up. When a student takes three AP exams in the course of their high school career, they have a passing score to three or higher. Well, it just so happens, you may know Andrew Gates. I brought him in here last year because he had two purpose scores. Boy, he got his third purpose score this year. So I actually was talking to his parents today and he wanted to come about that. So he is our first ever AP scholar. It's really exciting. Our senior ambassadors, this is exciting too, the fact that our kids are getting involved academically, but also helping others. The number of seniors who are helping our underclassmen, from nine to 18 kids. That's great for them. It's also great for our freshmen and underclassmen to have that exposure to successful seniors. So really super excited about that. Thought it was important to share those positive things about our academics. As you all know, our state champion, Ruth, that was here earlier, our third place baseball team. What they've done is not easy. That is a really, really important thing to acknowledge. Emily McAvoy, you know, he's one of the right. Whenever he went to the Nationals at speech and debate, they were wearing masks. So it's hard to kind of get that picture to you. But to celebrate him, he got fourth place in the nation for storytelling at, at speech and debate nationals. That's a really, really big deal. I know when we were watching it, getting goosebumps just kind of watching that. Really excited for him and for Cathy Tobin and our speech debate team. Our JAG program that we were able to start, they placed in the top 10 in creative decision-making competition at the National Career Development Conference. What's really cool is, see, as the wire comes back, they continue to get more certificates. We're just trying to keep up with all the wonderful things. And we just want to tap them and really show all the great things that they're doing. So tonight, I just wanted to give a few moments to be able to acknowledge some of those wonderful things. And there's more coming down the road. One of the things we know about when we are looking at progress more and how our kids doing, not just academic, not just in activities, but social emotion. And so we're looking at that as well. So thank you for allowing me to come in here and present tonight from the recording, sharing some successes down the road. Thank you.
Patreon input. I've got one here. But if there's anyone else that has something that they want to talk on the back of the, the paper, if you can fill it out.
Yeah, they're on over here. Look, we're gonna talk right here. Are you gonna help me? I like wrote it out. So for those of you not knowing, my name is Jacqueline Hutton. And tonight, I would like to talk to you about the dyslexia law, SB 681 that was passed by the Missouri Senate and signed by Governor Parsons in May of this year. First, I'd like to give you some background about myself and my education. I'm a former Willard teacher who taught fifth grade ELA for four years. Prior to that, I taught in Arkansas as a fifth grade ELA teacher and reading interventionist. My role as a reading interventionist was to work with students who are identified for being at risk of having dyslexia. I have a degree in early childhood education, an ESL certificate, and a master's in reading. As you can guess, I'm passionate about reading. The state of Missouri is behind many other states when it comes to dyslexia intervention. This recent law that was passed, states that school districts must provide students who have a dyslexia diagnosis or are, or are identified as being at risk for dyslexia receive intensive instructional services and supports through evidence-based reading instructions and supports. DUC guidelines state that intervention should be provided using structured literacy framework. I can tell you from firsthand knowledge that Willard does not have these types of services or supports available for students currently. When looking at Willard's dyslexia plan, it states that students will, will be. When looking at Willard's dyslexia plan, it states that students will be progress monitored, does not include what type of intervention they will receive. Additionally, the new writing curriculum that was purchased for the 21-22 school year, Lucy Hawkins, is a balanced literacy approach and not based on the science of reading. It is my understanding that the district plans to purchase the reading curriculum as well. And I know in fifth grade, we used both of reading and writing curriculums last school year. Willard has a reputation of being a great school district by being proactive and following this new law and creating a dyslexia plan that provides structured literacy intervention for students who need it. Willard has the opportunity to lead by example in our area. Also, this would support Dr. Wilken's vision of one Willard, one team through cultivating enthusiasm for learning, showing respect for students with dyslexia or dyslexia markers, and showing the members of our community who have students with dyslexia that the district supports them. Thank you.
Motion to approve. Okay, you got it. Taking you to the board, she kind of segwayed for me greatly. Real quick, next month, I'm going to talk about all of our goals. You've heard, you've heard all of the goals, but I think it's important to start this school year, we talked about it again. And I want to talk about the number one goal, which is, what she said, one Willard, one team. If you look at that, and I want to call it a logo though, that is our theme for the year. We're not replacing the tribal belt. That's kind of what we're going with, just to remind people that the world is divided, the United States is divided. Our community is probably divided on a lot of topics. But if we function as one for one kids, we will get a lot done. So now, that theme logo, it is not perfect right now. We do plan to kick it out next week to the public. And it's a little fuzzy, there's one dot out of place, so I wanted to point those out before you pointed them out to me. But I know Jason was all over it. But no, I, I think, I think it will be good, so. Questions on that? Be leadership team meeting Tuesday. All of our principals, assistant principals, and all of our directors got together, we talked about leadership, we talked about trust. And I really focus hard on, it is hard to lead if we are not trusting. So I have Martin, he's gonna play this short one-minute video that I played, the group. Just about trusting teams.
But how do I get the most out of my people? Like they're a towel that you wring. It's a flawed question. The question is, how do I help create an environment in which my people can work at their natural best? And the answers will be entirely different. That's called good leadership. And a leader's responsibility is to create an environment in which people can work to their natural best, in which the people can trust each other, develop these trusting teams. Trusting teams is something very specific. Trusting teams means that someone can come to work and raise their hand and say, "I made a mistake. I don't feel like I have adequate training to do the job you've asked me to do. I'm scared. I'm having problems at home that is affecting my work. I need help." Without any fear of humiliation or retribution. If anything, they say these things with absolute confidence that people were rushing to have them. If we do not have trusting teams, what we do have is a group of people who show up to work every single day, lying, hiding, and thinking. I get this question all the time. Simon, how?
Hey, that's it. So one Willard, one team. Trusting teams is huge. I mean, that's huge. It starts here, goes into every building. I think that is the segue, one team, one goal, is trust. Wanted to throw that at you. I don't see the training room is getting remodeled next week, so plan for August study session to be at East Elementary, which is actually remodeled this summer, so we need to look at. And then last but not least, the audit was last week, went very well. I did have a conversation with the auditor. We talked a lot about where our budget is now. We talked a lot about how we have extra money this year and next year. And he cautioned us, he goes, "Watch the economy work as well." So just thought I'd do that. Thank you.
Okay, so my turn. The first thing, just going to mention a few things here, MAPUCC preliminary scores are out, they're still in bar code, so they're not open to the public. And so we, first of all, just reviewing these preliminarily, a lot of celebrations during the last spring, kind of talked about how the NWA is a predictor. Typically, we're higher than the NWA, that is holding true, and we're going to have a lot of things to share in September, before. There, of course, there are always still areas to improve, there's still a lot of celebrations. We're going to stick with what we did last year and bring the big academic update in September, so I think that's, I think I have 15 or 16th maybe board report that also in bar code should be off at that time, so it should be public. Principals do have their scores, and they'll be reviewing those with their teams in the coming weeks. And kind of one of those, they were chomping at the bit to get those scores, texting a lot of us and asking us, "We can get those," so they were trying to get those out this week. We got into it, so that's exciting. IMSIP 6, just a reminder, you've mentioned this quite a few times, that this set of assessments in the spring is the first kind of baseline data for IMSIP 6 in terms of the achievement side. As Dr. Moss mentioned, 70% of that is on achievement, graduate, all the numbers, then the 30% is the continuous improvement. So we're excited to see how that shakes out. We did learn that we're not in the first round of IMSIP 6, meaning they picked a third of the schools to be the first cohort that kind of hits it. We're in cohort two. We should, Dr. Wilken corrected if I'm wrong, we still will get an IMSIP score in December or January, but we're just not a part of the first group that's going to be doing half a whole comprehensive. I'm not sure if that's good or bad. We kind of wanted to be in it to, well, invite it, but anyway. So we'll be hearing more. And IMSIP 6 really is what will guide the strategic plan, kind of as Dr. Moss mentioned. Team kickoff, we talked about it a couple of times, I'll just reiterate what Dr. Wilken said, it was awesome, very positive. You mentioned you heard a little bit about it, just great team building. During the day, we met in here, and then at night, we had our pool party, and so that was a good culmination. Our focus in here during the day was around IMSIP 6, we did some wording. It was about team building and trust. Also, our three focus areas as a district, we're there about goal setting, student leadership, and family partnership. So again, nothing new, just kind of just doubling down on what we're doing and how can we do it, do it well, so pretty, pretty exciting. Last thing we want to share is high school PLCs, I'm glad Dr. Morrison is here. We had the opportunity, Stephanie Anderson and I went with Dr. Morrison and a team of five or six teachers in June to St. Charles to go to a PLC conference, which is professional learning communities. And it was a really good, it was number one fun, we did have a good time bonding, but it got a lot of great learning too, and we had great feedback from those teachers. High school's been great about centering around PLCs for a number of years, but they're really re-centering, they're really grounding themselves even more and exciting. And they said there's a lot of exciting celebrations to come even more around that, so just wanted to mention that. Thank you.
Hey, just a few updates on some of the summer projects that have been going on. I think when you look at our maintenance grounds, custodial, transportation, when we think about those that are hitting the ground running, you know, we think of maintenance, we think of the custodial portion of that. And obviously, grounds, all kind of work, you know. I've been teasing Phil Robertson, like, well, you guys have to do, you haven't both in a month, so. They may be, get the brunt of some of the jokes from me here lately, but they've all been working really hard to get things prepped and ready for our teachers to return and for our students to return as well. So just some brief updates for you. North roof, the roof is complete. They are still waiting on some pieces, some of the tram, obviously, that has not come in, probably no shock to anybody, but that project has been complete. When we talk about, Dr. Wilken mentioned the history libraries, carpet's been installed, same thing in the media south, so those two projects are done and complete. We had, we've got some various concrete projects kind of going on, some of them are smaller, some are a little bit more large in nature. We've got the high school, and they were reporting that today. We've got, you know, the south side of the sidewalk and special services building, those are still on the to-be-done list, they just haven't quite gotten to those just yet, but I don't know that those will be done before school starts, but they're going to get done this fall. Intermediate south, or excuse me, intermediate doors in North Elementary, the drop ceilings in the classrooms that were on our to-do list are done and complete. One really interesting point, I think, that kind of was our goal, and unfortunately, due to supply, I think we're not going to meet at the secure entrances at East and Central. We're having a problem, they're having a problem getting the doors in. No shock to anybody, our goal was August first, that we hoped that those doors would be in. But they're not going to be. Next week, Lane and I are going to meet and discuss with the company kind of what the timeline actually looks like to get those installed. Hopefully, when our students obviously aren't in session, but to expedite that as quickly as we can for our students. They have got the wall removed in East that they wanted to remove for a first portion of that, that project to be completed. And a couple of things, again, lastly, just to kind of, to hit on how, how hard are people working? You know, Matt Young mentioned the custodians, like gym floors, they've worked their tails off all summer, and gym floors are done. They've gotten that complete. They've also completely repainted south, so that's good to go. I think they just finished that this week. And I think the gym floor refinishing went really well, you know, and that's certainly going to be a cost savings, I would presume, for the district, but I don't know how much, not outsourcing that. Maintenance also renovated a computer lab classroom at Wohy into an ECSE classroom, so that is done and complete. And then lastly, at some point, you know, Dr. Wilken mentioned, in most of our support staff positions, we're still trying to hire people. And all of them are a concern, and transportation was a pretty large concern of ours. You know, I think at one point, we were short 12 or 13 drivers. Randy's worked hard at getting some banners out, doing some things that maybe we haven't had to do in the past. Had a little bus fair, tried to recruit some people, and that garnered 25 applicants, which is a really high number of applicants. And everything, I think, maybe we've hired seven, but I think Randy's also going to try to work with some of those other additional people that weren't part of that seven, maybe hire on his trip drivers, maybe substitute drivers, and things like that, so that we can kind of build, build up and build to them, should we need additional drivers. You know, the challenge, of course, at that point now is, we've got to get them all trained and ready to go before school gets here, so we're kind of working through what that's going to look like. And it may be a Saturday training day, maybe something like that, maybe something in the evening to offer different opportunities for those people that are going to come down as the district has the structures. Other than that, I think I'm trying to figure out everything that I'm supposed to be doing. So it's been great. You know, the kickoff Tuesday was, was a really good thing and a positive thing, and I think we're off to a good one, so.
Motion to approve. We've seen it. Do you have any questions on it? Consider agenda.
Really only one thing for me to point out is, the policies are on there, control maintenance MSBA. Me and Sarah met, we met with, had phone conference with MSBA this summer. They're honest, they told us, hey, Sarah, you did all the labor work in the fall, they're ready to roll. So a blanket approval is what we're at. And from there, we'll start getting the committee together on all new policies.
Motion to approve.
Yeah.
And for you, that was two.
Julie.
Julie. That should be something that will help you as well. A lot of the questions you had, the new policy updates will be online for you as well. Should be in a format that you should, I mean, any of us can get on there and be able to help, and that might answer some of the preliminary things you have.
Oh, okay. When did you say that that would be posted? Or did you?
Yeah, there are some there now, but the new updates will be this next month, right?
It should be, at least in the future. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Motion to approve. Consider agenda.
Jason did say move, I mean, should I approve the items?
Any other discussion? All in favor, put your dry hand. All opposed?
Surplus property.
Yeah, we've just got a few items. We've got some various items that come from the state department, you guys can look at that list. We've also, looks like we've got some curriculum items that are on the surplus, as well as we've got some desks and chairs that have come to the premise. That, we've had some communication if anybody else needs them. We do have one school, I think John's going to reach out maybe tomorrow, because we've got a couple of NTEs that, that we've, we've added there at Wohy in her building to make certain, that they're not needed before they move forward. I would hope that you all approve those, so.
Are these workbooks, the excess, or the excess workbooks, are they valuable at all? I think it's, do other districts look for maybe supplemental items that you're kind of needing? Is there value to that? Are there just those, the less fiber, the recycled?
Yeah, I don't know. I, sometimes we'll put them on, sometimes you have homeschoolers that don't have them.
It does happen.
Yeah.
And I want to ask a question, like, because like today, we have the W3 again, and I went, yeah, and there's like 100 books, math books in there that we had to get moved down there. Those, I asked someone, the director of them, and they're like, they haven't used them for several years. Those things are the things that I think we need to go to our school and get those going to spend, somebody can use those, that are not, that are not technology. Some of these smaller schools that don't have the technology, they need these books. We can look at that for the next couple of months.
I think that's, in my previous district, there was, and there's one group that specifically, anytime the textbooks will put on down deals, I mean, they nap them up, and we'll be able to pick them up.
There's a few of them, even like some of your missionary works and stuff, they'll take them and take them overseas, so I think they need to be used on that. Motion to approve.
Motion to approve. Prove the surplus.
All second.
Betty, you have just, during the second, should the surplus help a little?
Any discussion? All in favor, put your dry hand. All opposed? Motion here. Substitute teacher rates.
So we have a recommendation that you can read there. Essentially, 100 bucks for teachers, it's currently 92.50, that'll bring us in line with our peers.
Discussion. Do we have a motion to approve the substitute teacher rate? It's presented.
Motion to approve the substitute teacher, I think, rate. It's presented.
He didn't have 22 seconds to determine the substitute teacher rates.
All in favor, put your dry hand. All opposed. Motion to approve. Modification, city on entry sacreds.
Kathy's going to text me this, I'll start. You guys have an updated budget summary that we received, probably about $510 today, so it's brand new. It totals $31 million, let's just say $31.5 billion, pretty easy numbers. If you remember, our board's goal for the six projects was $30.5. We have $29.5 of bond issue money, which would be going up a million in reserves. Now, looking at that budget, you'll see the number I have circled at the top with an up arrow. I'm not 100% sure we can do what we want to do there for that amount. Kind of keep that in mind. And something else to consider, site circulation for like the high school, south and central, there's a little bit of money budgeted, but it would probably be at least a half a million dollar add for, to do exactly what we want to do, so. $31.5 is where we are. So any, before we look at any of the images, any thoughts on budget? So any, before we look at any of the images, any thoughts on budget?
I think we give them a hundred. I think they need to work with us a little bit more, a little harder to get to that number. I know there, it was hinting that, you know, well, you just need to share all the projects or, yeah. Personally, as a committee member, wouldn't make a fan of that, that, say, amount of little thought. I think there's enough, enough places within the program of the six projects that we can, we can make changes, that they should be more willing to work with us, so that we, I think we can hit that number of 31.5, we really do. That's just me.
On the committee, since all of us are on the committee, I want to know what your thoughts are. We're going to go into diagrams of what's your thought process as to some of these being changed.
Will Smith will first, Ron will go first? Don't start. Well, so, I mean, I will, I want to be honest upfront, we have added, we have added to the high school project, or we requested some, some changes or some additions that we can look at. One being concession stand and a public restroom down on that end of the building to help with our big athletic events and building wide hosted events and whatnot, because we really don't have a quality space for patrons to go to hit the restroom and do concessions down by the oxygen. So that was an addition, right, that we did request. However, I feel like there are areas within the other projects that we identified as a committee that we could pull back on and cover the costs, right? So I thought we worked really hard as a committee and with, with the administrators that were on the committee to come to a quality consensus. I mean, at the beginning, we all had our, had different visions, right? And we were able to work and really come up with a solid plan, and I still don't feel like, maybe it was because it was our plan and not their plan, but there, there's just something off. So I, I just don't know. I like what we landed on, but I feel like they added some additional stuff after the fact, that maybe we need to communicate to them that.
Since the last meeting.
Since the last meeting, yeah.
Okay. So when we look at the diagrams, let's point some of those out so that we know what we're talking about. What do you have?
I guess some of my concern or insight would be, when we did, we asked for separate activities, we asked for concession. I agree with Matt, and I think over the other projects, levers and just those, where that's all covered. But I think the bigger issue, or at least maybe more, we're really standing, do we know that the number that given us winds up with what we're asking for? Is it still kind of gray, is it still kind of fuzzy? I guess that's.
I think it's definitely fuzzy, but I think they are probably estimating high.
That's fair, I just.
Can you guys hear okay? Because I want to make sure, and this is open session.
Pretty good.
I'll speak, I can use my, I can use my dad voice.
Okay.
But, um, so I guess that's my concerns, I want to make sure that the numbers we're talking about actually cover what we asked to see or what we would draw up and propose. If we think that are fuzzy, but they're estimating high, then I'm fine with going either direction, either A, we pull some levers on a few of the other projects to stay with what we asked for. But I do understand that, you know, maybe we need to take a little from each project. So I mean, I have some wiggle room on a few things. You know, would it be nice to have concessions down there? Would. How much, would they actually get used on a regular basis? I don't know. The concessions situation we have now isn't great, but if that could possibly be reworked, maybe we don't need concessions down there. Things like that, I think, are a good thing that needs to be discussed and what everybody needs to look at on those plans. You know, and personally, I don't have an issue with revising Central and South's gym size to an elementary size. It's, I mean, it's, it needs that same size court as what Wohe has, which is, you know, that, that is a cost savings. But again, you know, one of seven, so.
Martin, do you care to hit the clicker once? We'll, we'll talk about both elements in real quick.
All right. Ron, give it first.
Well, I was the odd man out, as usual. I didn't like the design at all at first at the high school. Willard South has always been a school that we've kind of left behind. And to downsize that, to put it at the high school, kind of sticks in my craw. I'll just tell you. I think they've done without for a long time. They deserve everything that they should give and not take it, money from there, and take it to the high school. Central has the most potential of growth in the future of Willard. Depend upon sewer and that, and that area. But, so I, I'm not in favor of downsizing those two gyms at all. I did not care for the design first at the, at the high school, and I still have problems with tying the, the one gymnasium on east side to the, to the safe room. I, I don't like, every time I've had any dealings in my personal life with doing any kind of remodeling or anything, tying another building to another building usually creates a leak. And so we create a leak, I think, in the future, and it may not be in my life, like, between those two buildings. Plus, they have not been able to tell me where their sewer and water lines are going to go. I, if it goes between those two buildings, I, I kind of think it might go between those two buildings, otherwise they're going to have a panel on a sewer system going out to the north side and then turning down to east side of that building and connecting to the manhole down to the south. So I'm not, I'm not crazy about the, the size and the tying in of the buildings at the north area, the high school. So I'm probably the odd man out, it's decision of this board, but I cannot go along with downsizing the two gyms at Central and South. And also of the tying of the two buildings together and a roof line that I think in the future will lead. So at one time, this thing has been all over the board, guys. Every time I go to a meeting with them, it's a different figure. It's never, it's this way or that way. And the last meeting I went to, I believe, is they had that whole facility under a safe room, and, and if the cost figure was at the same price as building on those, the bathrooms and all that other on the north side of that hill. So, and I, and I brought up this, these are safe rooms for our children, but I look at it as a community, I look at the community, if there was ever a tornado like Joplin, where would people in our community go? There's no place in Willard, and there never will be, because our city council and our city will never be able to afford something like this. Community themselves paid for this. It's not just one group of people with children paid for this. It's the 85-year-old lady that's living on social security and paying her school taxes. And so I look at it that in the future, if we have a place at South area, a place at Central area, that if we have something, a major storm that wipes out Willard or whatever, that those elderly people and those people can go to. And I know, Mr. Dixon said, that's not what we proposed for the community. And that, and I agree with him, that's not what we proposed, proposed for the community. But I feel, since I've lived here all my life, that I feel like I'm obligated to the citizens of Willard to provide something in case of that disaster. So I don't like the design of the high school. I think it can be redesigned. And I don't like the overspend. Don't let me, I mean, I hate, I still think maybe Lisa, with the way interest rates are going, she might have been low at 900,000. I think we're going to be able to invest that money and maybe make more than 900,000 on that money. I don't know that. But I, I feel that we, it's our obligation to build a facility that the community would be proud of and to use in case of a situation, a disaster might hit Willard. So that's where I'm coming from, but I definitely do not like tying those two buildings together. I, I'm against that totally. So that's where I started.
30.5 is where we're at, about a million over. Let's talk about different cost savings, because we probably do need this decision tonight. Am I taking your thunder, Kathy?
No, go for it.
Okay. This is South Elementary. Don't get into the weeds. The safe room, if we did shrink it to what they, they call an elementary size, the original is a 96 by 66, an elementary size would be an 88 by 58, which is a little difference in 1,200 square foot. That would save 250,000. Martin, go ahead and click that button. That's Central's, and same figure, if, if we shrink that, 250,000. I'm not saying we should do that, I'm just saying that's some options. Martin, go ahead, hit it. That is the high school, and to kind of put it in perspective, this is the oxygen right here, so this is the back of the school. This, let's talk about the storm shelter here. They come in panels. We could shrink each side, two panels, or one panel on east side?
Three panels.
One panel on each side, and that would save us $250,000 on that. What we lose is, I guess, overall, safe room square footage, but you can see how there's two basketball courts on there. Probably if we shrink it, we would have one basketball volleyball court, one volleyball court, and still have the four wrestling mats. Other savings we could do, and I can't reach it, up there, the yellow box, the yellow box at the top, the left side is concessions, the middle section is public restrooms, and the section on the right is new locker rooms. Kathy, what did I miss?
Uh, there's also a corridor that links everything, and so that potential in, in that first top rectangle in yellow, that's what we call an alternate add. So in pricing, they have the ability to price that just together, so you have safe room, then you have that section, which also Eric has thrown out pricing each one of those components individually, so we can look at it and see, like, if we pull out concession, how much does that save? Okay. And then that other yellow that's running vertical, obviously is the storage room, but also has a corridor that kind of comes from the main corridor and then runs that perpendicular way.
This section is the section Ron was referencing.
Yes.
And right here is where you're talking about, if we have to, we have to come all the way out here and make a deal and come up on it, whereas right now.
Water is the utility system right through there. The interconnect is further down. It's that, that gray horizontal line is your sidewalk coming out.
So it's farther down here.
Then you've got a grassy area, then you've got the, the receiving dock drive, the, the interconnect is at the south side of the rece, of the receiving dock road, so.
So it's way down here.
It's down about, yeah, where your hand is. Now, I, it, to, to, rather what Ron was saying, there is electrical currently, right along there that feeds the, the lighting, the, the street lighting, and there is a, a water loop for the fire hydrants and all of those things that does run right, right through there.
And will they move those, or will?
They've not, they've not.
Or will we do?
Like Ron said, they haven't told us what their plan is.
We, I thought when we asked about that water, the fire hydrant, I thought that's going to have to bump out and have to do it anyway.
Yeah.
So I assumed that water and sewer would bump out forever, but maybe I'm hearing it wrong.
Because we don't want it more concrete over it, because that's what we're bringing in two years.
Exactly. We, we don't want it to be.
I think the other, like, just tidbit of information for consideration, when we go back to talking about the safe rooms at Central and South, if you all choose to remove those panels, to make those courts smaller, that area, they're still going to be larger than what they currently have.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, so now Central's is larger, because their current, what they're currently using as a gym and cafeteria is smaller than that new gym at South currently, does that make sense?
True.
So Central will see.
Substantial growth.
It's like an eight by 10-foot growth, it's like 10-foot wide, wider than what they currently have, eight-foot longer. South's is a little smaller, one is four foot, and I think the, maybe eight foot-ish. I've got the numbers, I can look them up.
And we have to take into consideration, like Dr. Wilken said, you know, Wohe's gym, right now, right, Wohe is the only elementary, you know, Wohe and South are the only elementaries with standalone gymnasiums just for B, right?
Right.
We're not going to go back in, and, probably, right, we're not going to go back in and build a new safe room gymnasium that portrait those in the future, because they already have a elementary-sized gymnasium, right? And I think we, we have to think about stages, you know, in, in our facilities. We have our elementary phase or pod, we have our intermediate school, and the size of kids and all, and capacity and all that for the intermediate, and then we have our middle school, high school, you know. What are we going to gain by building a full-size, high school-level gymnasium at our elementary schools? Kathy, can you speak to the, the high school teams, middle school teams traversing down to Central or down to Willard South to practice, or?
Well, I think there's different layers to that discussion in terms of use. You know, I went out to Central yesterday and met with Shane, and we dragged it out and talked about it, and what's this look like, does this feel good, you know? And then one of his concerns in terms of the width was when they're hosting programs, which they host six programs a year, you know, and being able to get everybody in there. So I think when you're talking about the educational side of things and PE in general, I think those spaces are just fine. You know, and I think that both of those principles would also tell you that. You know, I think where their brains start working really hard is when they're trying to host an event that draws in families, right? And so I think the first consideration is, is that our prime concern? You know, is that, like, where's that on our priority list versus the educational process and providing a space for opportunity? You know, so that's within their buildings, but then there's another layer of, we're talking about youth programs and different groups utilizing spaces. The reality is, even if it's a smaller surface, can any team go run a practice on it? Yes, they can. It may be a smaller surface, if it's a league in the summer, it's a smaller surface, but can you utilize it? Yes, you can. Lots of other school districts do that. The next layer of that, and having a conversation about any practices during the school year as it pertains to middle school or high school groups, I think that gets really tricky for the primaries. And number one, middle school kids would have to be transported to those schools after school is out. And number two, in terms of a start time for a practice, our school schedules and our dismissals are not the same. You know, so if we're talking about a middle school or a high school program utilizing that for some sort of practice, whatever program that it is, their start time is going to have to be later, which is also. their start time is going to have to be later, which is also, for some, not optimal because of transportation. So, I think there's different layers of conversation, um, when we're talking about reducing those panels in that gym floor size. I mean, I think ultimately, if you're in an elementary and you have a high school floor, it looks really cool. I mean, intermediate South, which is an intermediate school, that floor is beautiful. I mean, the court, uh, it, that's a phenomenal facility. Um, but also, I mean, you mentioned, mentioned Wokee and the elementary gym, and we're probably not gonna add a safe room there, you know? And then we have North, we have some different East, we have different considerations like that, so... Those are your layers, um, for consideration. Um, I didn't get a chance to go meet with Kathy yesterday because her little one, one of her younger daughters got sick at daycare at the hospital, I think. Um, so I haven't had the opportunity to kind of lay it out for her. Um, but I also think, you know, she mentioned Tuesday, we're just thankful, right? We need to speak to, to part of Ron's point, like, we're just thankful, and we'll make anything work. So, um, that doesn't mean that we should just take from them because we can, and I don't think that that's what our thought process is at all. So, those are the different layers, I think, of consideration for those floors and those spaces. But I think educationally during the day, I think it's a great space and, and what we utilize for them.
I think that's what we need to think about, is the priority order, right? I think educationally needs to be our top, followed, just, just, you know, almost mirrored to safety, because that's why we're building a safe room there, right? It's for, you know, does it have the capacity for our kids in that school, and the students? And then some, for some of our community members, if need be, right? Um, and, and then, you know, think about the after-school programming of the space. I mean, you even mentioned, Kathy, that even just going to a, a smaller size, you know, Central's gonna grow exponentially, their capacity for their music events and things of that nature, from where they currently are, right?
You say the part of that, you, you can enlarge those spaces down the...
No, I mean, once you make them smaller, they're smaller. Whereas, this stuff can be added, could be added later. And if we're talking about the educational side, I don't know if that space provides any educational value. Does it, the concessions?
Maybe some mathematical work, I don't know.
I'm just, I'm just thinking of, for Kathy, I mean, that's the discussion.
That could, that could be...
One thing we round table the couple meetings is, we have the public restrooms up there, which we, we feel we need on that side of the building for events. We also have the locker rooms. We toyed around with, we combined those. Where on public nights, just the restroom pieces are open, you lock the locker rooms, and then, normal days, it's open for kids. Just a thought there, too.
Make those a dual-use, with the option of locking off the locker rooms on nights that nobody is using.
Okay, so what are you, what are they wanting right now? I mean, I know they're, they're, they're getting ready to go out for the next phase.
Yeah, if you click back, I mean, all of the two elementary buildings, they need to know right now, are we wanting the full size, or are we wanting to reduce?
Well, I think they want to vote.
Yeah, and they want to vote.
Can I say one other thing in regards to the high school and the, the alternate add-on? To kind of speak to, uh, some of your points up there. I think it's hard sometimes to keep in mind that the safe room is a safe room and is a practice facility. You know, competition-wise, we're, we're not really gearing it for that. And I think sometimes that's hard to keep that in the, the right frame of mind. The other piece of it, too, when we are hosting events where a competition is, a competition is taking place in the oxygen, it's truly not very often. You know, when we're, when we're in the main gym and we're in the oxygen, it's generally for a super night, it's for a volleyball tournament, or it's a summer activity. Could be wrestling, um, in the five years I've been here, we've, what, where do our kids wanna play and wanna compete, regardless of the program, to showcase it's in the main gym. You know, and so in terms of competitive events in that direction, um, not to say that the restrooms, I think the restrooms will be used, period, but in terms of things taking place in that oxygen phase, it's not as often, I think, as where we want our minds to go to, perhaps. So, that's just information for you, if you want, um, as you guys make your decisions.
I'll make a motion that says we approve the reduction of the elementary gym designs down to a elementary-sized gymnasium.
That's a joke. Or a gym.
It's our second, too.
Our second, we wish this was...
We've moved this a little second for the modification of the elementary safe rooms to accommodate a seventy-four minute course of...
We made a discussion. All in favor of putting it right here? All opposed? They'll stay at the same size as this, then? What about, do you even understand, Kathy?
Well, we kind of need approval of, not any of the details, but the overall design. You care to click to the high school? One being, I think we need to talk about the panel on each side. Do we want to keep the storm shelter at that size? Do we want to reduce the panel, that's two-hundred-and-fifty thousand? So, I think that's one conversation. Other than that, the motion will be more or less this design. Knowing the yellow, it'll come with a different price, kind of as an alternative.
When you reduce it, list the reduction in, uh, capacity.
They help us, they help you guys down.
I don't know.
But what did it have to be per person, you were with it?
Six foot?
Six foot per person, so we can figure out.
Fifteen hundred and eighty-nine, nine thousand square feet. So, we're...
The reduction was like thirteen...
Take it down to, down to eighteen hundred individuals, I think.
We call her, she's on, she's on...
She's on standby.
Yeah, you can be called.
Probably be booked.
Yeah.
I think I just, I have a hard time with just reducing the size of gym, because you can't change it. You don't, versus, versus...
So, while we're doing that, the other big question is, if this goes, regardless of what happens, if you're talking about putting this at the roof? That's the storage, whether it's storage or whatever, so, that's the other thing. And Ron, you have a issue with that, and you think it should be separated, so...
Talking about the high school, if you take off one, do you want to make the size, size, and shrink that, what does that do to our capacity? So, minor impact, two hundred people, so you take the two thousand, eighteen hundred? Say that again, I'm sorry.
While they're talking on that, one of the other things at the other two schools was they did a circumference, or they did a diner so far out, like, what was it, a ten-minute? To try to get to the building?
Okay, very good, thank you.
Pay more than bid for the people that are in that community.
The neighborhoods there by South, you know, off there?
Yeah.
The neighborhoods there by Center?
Yeah.
Get off there.
Hundred fifty people. So, two thousand, I mean, fifteen, that's...
I would have to reduce the size of options.
How's connecting them, I mean, is, is this connection any different than the other additions that we've done with the high school?
Yeah.
I mean, it's the same.
Well, the, the big addition we did, you know, that had the backs and, and history of above, that was an extension of a metal roof, which there was some overlapping of the stuff that can be done, that probably mitigates leaking more so than a flat roof tie-in. Um, but guys, I mean, you can't, you can't look at any of our buildings in this district that have not been added on to multiple, multiple times. These are professionals, the engineers, the architects, you know, there'll be provisions in place of the new precast for that integration. Uh, Lindsay said they'll be able to come back into the precasts, like, ninety-five percent be able to come back to that precast and etch that for a tie-in, that has no problem.
So, what are we approving, because you're gonna be able to bid now separately, so we're just approving that we're gonna do this basically as part...
More or less the big, the big picture.
The safe room, what's inside the safe room, is that what you're saying?
Well, the approval would be a safe room disconnection in this, but knowing that that's gonna be a separate, where they can go ahead and go to work on specific designs.
So, no other prices up? So, we need another...
When we talk about going from two thousand to eighteen hundred, what's, how many people in the high school?
Between twelve and thirteen, fifteen hundred.
Dr. Ward, can you include staff and the students from this last school year? We're looking at, so thirteen and two plus one fifty, so yeah, about fifteen hundred bodies, yep.
Explicit capacity. Of that gym, our current main gym, like, we have our terminal, and it's packed.
When it's seated, seated, it's right around twenty-three hundred.
Yeah, so that, that's my thinking, if we're, if we're cutting it down, pushing that number, and you have, and what you, and what you do, so...
I don't think there was ever any intent to have a higher capacity than two thousand in the design conversations, because that, that covered the current student population and the ability to potentially give the kids the least over to it, and that was it.
Right, that's what I'm saying, I want to be colored. When we talk about reducing it, so...
Yeah, well, you reduce, you start getting two-hundred-and-fifty people.
You start getting closer and closer to no room for, for growth, so...
Once it passes, it works, the school will know that, okay? I mean, it's, I mean, it's...
The, the growth plan says, is that saying what we have, right? I don't quite believe it, but...
I think we'll be having this conversation exactly.
I won't be having that conversation twenty minutes.
I mean, if, if we're wanting to plan for substantial growth, then we've got to back to the front.
Well, I think I'll show you, we, we have to have a discussion.
I really think we're gonna have to talk with everybody, as I was, I had a problem with how the family, it's kind of like we throw a number at them, and they just do what they have to, and try to push me up there. That was a question we've been hiring this last time, this is...
I think just get the two facilities, they've got enough work, I don't think we could, I don't think we can. I mean, I don't know, we'd probably like that, well, we're gonna be working on all of this.
The precasting thing, that was important for them, for the building piece of it, for the safe room, that, that you need to get those precasts all over together.
Well, my feelings are, if all precasts on that building, I have no problem with that. I mean, if they make it the full size of the precast, it's the connection.
The tie-in is not gonna be a big deal, because right now, they're, it's not the same roof line. So, if you do approve it or down on the other card, it's gonna be a different story.
Yeah, because the roof line in that center section, we, well, the roof lines are the two.
So, are you kind of with us, just approving, give the full size on this one, if that's what somebody requests? This piece?
The safe room.
I think the, I think the interior of the safe room, correct me if I'm wrong, might change if some of the stuff in the yellow areas are not approved, you know? Because of storage.
That's exactly because of storage.
Because the goal was to get some additional, I mean, we're gonna have to replace the school mats, and... And probably be, I don't know, different restrooms, maybe?
I can wake up a certain... Different than that, that had storage rooms down at the other end, and also Coach's room with the bathroom, and...
I think those, that would be, Marcus, that's what I'm...
Just everything we put inside the panels costs, costs more. You cut the rail pretty well. I, I disagree, because we don't know what that's gonna cost. We don't know exactly what that's...
You think it's gonna be cheaper for the storage?
Well, I, I need to know that before I can say that, but it's, it's not gonna be free.
I think it's gonna be very...
You said you're gonna, what's gonna be more than that? And that's this, this six, six million?
You would be adding two more panels. You would add, for the storage you're gonna get there, you'd add two panels longer, is what you would add. That's what you would add, because that's twenty foot across there, approximately. And so, you would probably add, add two panels on both sides, the length that you already got, you got the end gap already there, so, two panels, four panels total.
That should be... Five minutes down.
Uh, there would probably be a minimal lead down, because you're gonna be dead.
So, we're talking about, you're gonna be thirty-two?
Maybe the general concept it is right now, like, you know?
Well, if we approve that, if we approve that whole thing, they can go to work, and both of the yellow sections can be, be alternates.
Which would either be the full one with the extra two panels, or we'll leave that piece away.
No, the panels have to involve the safe room.
Yeah.
If we move those separate, they don't, they didn't do a panel. If we put one of the safe rooms, it's gonna cost a bit. Are we making that bigger?
I know that, but if you're doing that up there, and we end up not doing that, or just do the storage and stuff, and we make it that long, we're gonna need bid for the full thing. So, that's how they're gonna have to differentiate. Are we gonna cut it off up here and then have this as an add-ons? Or are we gonna do the full-size facility piece there?
Is that a sensible, if this, bid alternatives would be, or the, the base bid would be the layout as it is, just for the safe room, no storage, uh, no concessions, restrooms, locker rooms. Bid alternatives would be, uh, locker rooms one, restrooms one, concessions one, storage one. And then, the last alternative would be, none of the bid alternatives were selected, and, and in the safe room, buy two panels, and one, to get storage into the safe room.
I don't think they're gonna, I mean, that's gonna be two, more, two projects are gonna have to go. Into very detail, and I don't think they're gonna wanna do that.
Yes. I mean, we, we shot down the idea of putting it all inside the safe room, set it to two hundred bucks a panel. Now, we're, we're gonna, that's, that's what's frustrating.
That's probably where some of their frustration is kind of from, is because we're bouncing back and forth.
When you go back to the original deal, it's a safe room. We didn't bother with any restrooms or...
We did washrooms.
So, we did, we did go back to the original, and say, it's a safe room, and it'll probably save four thousand, four million dollars, don't add up. going out for the Vegas, maybe two things, by taking all the yellow out.
So the.
We did promise the locker rooms. They were on the original bid rules.
So back May of, May of 21, we had this design right here that had storage, mechanical viewing, restroom, and then outside of the safe room, we had locker rooms. So that was, that was, I think, what we took to the public, kind of bid rules.
We just need a motion and see where it goes.
I'd like a motion that we approve the conceptual layout as presented, requesting alternate bids for pricing, whichever the administration would like to see for a locker room pod, a restroom pod, concession pod. Can the storage interconnect between the buildings?
So then, thank you just for the current size.
Current size.
As proposed.
Kathy, can I move three seconds and two seconds? And I'm going to list all those under reconfiguration.
Okay. Any other discussion? All in favor, flip the flag hand. All opposed? WCCF board representing, Ron, you are right now, right?
Yeah, and I will not be running next year with the boards. I will be willing to serve or if they have an opening, I could take, if somebody else wants to. But I'm going to say this, may offend people, but if you're not willing to come to meetings, don't raise your hand. We've got plenty on the board right now that don't show up and have in the past. Am I right, Sarah? Okay. So if you're not willing to come to meetings, don't bother to, period.
So, do any of you want to be on the WCCF board? Before we make a representation on that, I want to talk today to you. Is that fair? And it, I mean, it usually counts, the board president usually points and you're like, so you guys kind of look, he decides to, they're pointing on his head. Thank you. Ms. Lanis.
Okay, not all of these are on your agenda, but here's kind of some important dates coming up. Build 101, August 8th. August 9th, study session will be at East Elementary in the library because they'll be doing the remodeling here on the technology. 16th is convocation at the high school. You guys are invited. Breakfast at 8:00. Program at 9:00. It'll last about an hour. It'll be done by 10:00. And then the August meeting, we are moving for tax rate purposes to August 25th. First day of school is the 23rd, and we have our community till date September.
What announcements?
Just thank you guys for coming and listening and being here and checking up on us and supporting us. Keep us in line. Appreciate you. Kathy, thank you for being here. Appreciate you.
Thank you all for coming. Motion to.
Kathy, can I move three seconds and two seconds?
All in favor, flip the flag hand.